I didn't see it. The book was, I didn't see that. I read the staff report and I was a little bit taken back to see this. I think you know the diligence that we all use and attempt to use in everything that comes before us to have something like this come forward without having some input from the commission. And I think those of you who have served as commissioners in the past know the feeling of having your due diligence and discussion rather than award at times. And there are three members of the planning commission here this evening. I know that we would, if it would interest you, any one of us would be, or all of us would be more than willing to discuss with you some of the reasoning that we had behind our discussions. And we're here if you need some input from the commission. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Rob Was.
My name is Rob Was. I am the property manager of the property located by the Little British Street is where the multiple units are. The people that have brought up negative information about this particular zoning do not have in mind the greater good of Norco. The little street that I manage, and I have been diligently working for the last five years to get a different quality of people on that little street. It is the most expensive street in Norco as far as police activity is concerned. The cops are out there every other day, or probably twice a day. I finally was able to evict the last rabble-rousers that were creating all these problems. By having these houses demolished and put in a hospitality zone, we would eliminate that thing. And what Norco needs is tax money. We need tax dollars. We need revenue. Now with this Silver Lakes Plan, there is a lot of need for more restaurants and upscale steakhouse. When you say cowboys, you think of guys living on the open road, on the prairies, taking the steer, killing it, and eating steak. There is no place in Norco where you can have a good steak. Picnico Piz was one of the restaurants that has been approached and has desired, has given us the idea that they would be willing to come to Norco, even up on the Sixth Street, that new shopping center that had been in there where Boot Barn and Horse Consignment Shopping is. But something happened and it didn't work. There is a definite need for Norco to have a bed and breakfast, a restaurant, and eliminate that Little British Street. I really talking against myself because I'm gonna lose my job taking care of these houses. But I think that supersedes the feeling that I have for Norco, and I've been here since 1985. And I've seen changes. I've seen the freeway coming in, and I've seen people. We raise endolusions, so it's not that, oh, you don't have horses and you're a city god. We have sixty endolusions. We are the, every time we come to the parade, we win because we have more horses than anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Theo.
That's not my full name, huh?
Sorry, sir, I didn't want to try to pronounce it there.
Good evening.
You can pronounce it.
Okay. Is it the like? That means, that means sweet milk in Holland.
Okay.
Pull the mic down, please.
Okay. I live on fourteen oh seven Second Street. I built my house over there in eighty-five. And why I built my house over there is that I didn't want a Norco to change on this side. And I feel that we have enough on that side of the freeway that people can have hospitality stuff and leave this side of the freeway alone. And also with the new road that we have now on Second Street, it's a beautiful road that just finished it. And now the traffic is gonna be a little bit less with the three schools that we have on Temescal. Still gonna be bad because we still have Second Street towards Valley, towards Temescal, two lanes actually. But that's okay, in time that probably will change. But if you're gonna put, you know, Taco Bells and everything else on that side, this side of the freeway, I think we'll still have a lot of traffic. And I don't like to see that happen on Second Street. So there's enough places in Norco on that side that it's open space that I think they have places for those type of things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Larry Cusamano.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Everything's been covered pretty well for traffic and trash. I'll cover one of them. Been here about thirty years. I've watched Norco change significantly. And I am totally against getting rid of any A-120 property. Councils thirty years ago worked very hard to get rid of commercial spotted throughout the town. They tried to keep all commercial on Hamner and Second Street and Grandfather and those businesses that were here. And that's my biggest complaint. A-120 property is too hard to come by as is. Therefore, I'm opposed to the change of those two locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Brian Choalwater.
Good evening, Council. Well, I guess I'll be the bad guy here because I'm in favor of this own changes. That is the most premier piece of property in the city to develop some of that type of a restaurant complex. That area has the best access in the city of anywhere you can go. Besides that... You, you need to look at the fact that you're about ready to go bankrupt. You need to get good access to income. If you don't start developing some of these areas to get income into the city, in the next couple of years, you are gonna be bankrupt. You already know that. Your fire department budget is a billion in the face, your police department budget hit you in the face, and your city budget hit you in the face. You don't start working on income for the city, and that type of project would bring in probably a tremendous amount of income, plus the tax increase on the property itself could bring in substantial amount of money. That's the things you need to look at in the overall picture and not just be tunnel vision on what you see. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Brian McCormick.
Good evening. My name's Brian McCormick, and I live at one seven seven eight Valley View. And if you're not familiar with that address, that's the property that cuts into the big seven acre piece of the south. So when you stand that building down, that's my house. I'm the person that's gonna have to live next to whatever goes in there. And as Mr. On has indicated, that would be nine restaurants. My bedroom is eight feet from that property line. I ask you, if you lived in my house, would you want nine restaurants now right outside of your bedroom window? I bought my house eleven years ago to raise my animals. I bought it where I bought it because the city charter provides that everything on this side of the E-15 will remain residential so that we wouldn't really be having this discussion. Yet here we are having this discussion. And I've talked to Mr. On several times, and he is, he's really adamant about putting nine restaurants. And I'm really adamant about nine restaurants not going next to my bedroom window. He said he would build a brick, a brick wall. Well, the back of my property is the height of my roof. So now it would have a brick wall that's higher than the roof of my house. Not only would it kill my view, it would also kill the airflow, which would put stress on my animals. I ask you again, if you lived where I live, would you condone that? I'm really adamantly opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. John Court Coors, what is that?
Court.
Court?
I am John Court. I happen to be Brian's neighbor. I also live adjacent to this property. I moved from a brand new, cooked leather house in Corona to Norco. I bought a fixer-upper house because I understood it was a strong city council that supports a Norco lifestyle. And I could live in this house, but it's beautiful, historic house was. My hope was that you could all the property behind me, animals behind me, be great. When I first moved in, I realized I had to deal with roosters, my neighbors with birds. It's all fine. Then Alex Pies came, and all of a sudden I couldn't sit in my backyard because there's a light behind me that lit it up, and I couldn't appreciate the stars as much. And I said, you know what? Other side of the freeway, that's what I was promised when I moved in. I was told, I'm moving into a neighborhood in an area that's protected to be this lifestyle. Fantastic to see. Cars go down at Christmas time singing Christmas carols, animals walking in a horse trail from my house. That's where I wanted my kids to be brought up, and I couldn't deny that. Just because there's a promise, some additional income, doesn't mean you should sell out a Norco lifestyle for a minute's bill of mind. There's better ways of making that. If Rob is so concerned about his properties, bringing in the wrong kind of people, upgrade his properties. Turn them into something that's more appreciable, and better class of people will move in. I say, keep Norco the way it is and protect my investment, your investment, your promises. We all vote for city council based on protecting the lifestyle where the promise is with fifteen thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Duffin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've lived in Norco for thirty-one years. I am in that neighborhood right there. And you have heard that all of the people that are living right there do not want that. And you've also heard that the people that are gonna make money from it do, and they don't live there. And as far as being able to rent out property, I own two homes that I rent out as a landlord myself. And it's getting good clientele is just a matter of how you screen your applicants. So maybe if you allowed a better class of person to move in, then you wouldn't have the problems that you're having in those properties. As far as the traffic issue that is on Second Street, yes, there's more lanes now, but it still crunches when it hits Corona and it still backs up there. Because we have three schools, as you well know, on Temescal, and the traffic problem there is horrendous because we never opened up Corona Street going to Hidden Valley. So during school hours, the traffic is insane. To put businesses there is going to make it worse. Why we would want business in the middle of a residential area where there's just homes there, I do not know. Because on my way here, I drove down Hamner. I saw many vacant lots that were very developable. And I also saw many businesses and strip centers that don't have anything in them yet. So we're going to now create more places that can become vacant or to put business in the middle of a residential area, it just does not make sense. So maybe that if we need business, that we need to encourage development of the land that's still open and vacant on Hamner, as well as filling the vacant spots that we have there instead of moving into what is our community so that people don't have hotels and restaurants out their bedroom window. And I would be affected by that because I'm right there too. So I would ask you, please, don't pass this.
Thank you. Pat Overtree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Well, dino to that lady, Mr. Cusamano. And I disagree with Vern. And I've been here thirty-four years. I remember we were always promised there would never be any commercial on the east side of freeway. And I was here long before the freeway came through. I'm here to support all those people on Hidden, on Hidden Valley and Valley View, Freudian I remember someone said that that piece of property was probably one of the most valuable pieces between here and Barstow and Las Vegas, and I don't doubt that it is. But I think, not to get personal, but the person who bought the property when it was zoned residential, maybe had been, was hoping it might have been changed to commercial or something else. We don't have to change it. I think we need to keep it commercial. Mr. Cusamano's correct, don't give up any A-120 zone property. And let's build some more lovely ranch houses on it in the future when the homes that are all vacant because of foreclosures and the hills get filled. Do not give up any A-120 zone. We've got the vacant property along Hamner Avenue. If someone wants to build an Orange Hills Restaurant or a Picnico Piz, let's, you know, build it at that spot they dug out below Beacon Hill. That's a great spot for it. Do not make these poor people who have residential property have to live next to a commercial zone. It's just, I think, a terrible thing that for you to let happen. So please, honor their request as residents, keep that area residential. Thank you.
Sharon Higman.
Yes, I'm Sharon Higman. I've been here thirty-five years now. And Pat basically said a lot of what I wanted to say and the lady before her. This is zoned residential horse property, it needs to stay that way. That's what it was, we were told when we moved out here thirty-five years ago. Eventually, let's put homes in there, you could put some nice homes. Let's get better vendors in those properties. We are encroaching on our residential properties. Where's it gonna stop once you start there? Are you gonna keep going anywhere? And find somewhere else to, to put the hospitality, you know, on the, by the egg ranch.
Thank you. Wendy Stevens Rodriguez.
I like the planning commission and Panever Street and Lady Redset. I thought things like they should be more around Hamner. Of course, I'm hard to please and building more homes, but I'm still thinking about alternatives. If one's asking me what I think. But for the time being, I like that they said. Have you ridden your horse today? I think that was a good question.
Thank you. Linda Dixon.
Once again, I really hadn't planned to say anything tonight, but I do stand behind the planning commission's decision. There was much thought and due diligence put into their decision. I stand behind it. But Mr. On, I remember back when he bought this property, he knew it was A-120. He came in, I had a first phone discussion with him, he was gonna change everything. So what, it's A-20? He's gonna show Norco, it's gonna be that. Nine restaurants on that property? I don't think so. How many is gonna be drive-throughs? How many would, these people would have to hear as loudspeaker all night, ding, ding, ding. The hospitality zoning, fantastic. I, I was so in favor of that, but at the time that it was approved, the intent was for it to be on down on Hamner at the places that really needed to have the hospitality zoning. There are other places for him to build his restaurant. When he bought this property, he bought it with a very, very historic house on the, the old Moreno House. There was a trailer of Norco that mysteriously burnt down. Now, I think that Mr. On needs to know that the people of Norco do stand behind their zoning. They stand behind the historic artifacts that we have in this town. And we are not gonna be railroaded by either Mr. On or the people who stand to cash in should this be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more cards on the subject, so we'll bring it back to Council. Harvey, we'll start with you.
Well, thank you very much for that honor. Well, I heard a lot here tonight.
It's your birthday.
Yes, my birthday, thank you. Heard a lot here tonight, and some of it I agree with, some of it I don't agree with, some of it is probably over fearful for what might be there. Nate, Nate was talking about the planning commission meeting and what wasn't in the thing. So I'd like to just read what Mr. Henderson did say about the property. Mrs. Henderson noted that the Big Hill property has sat empty for a long time and that no one has come along to offer to build houses. He added that the properties across the street are very blighted. He addressed some of the issues brought up by the public. Vice Chair Henderson explained that this commission has the right to place conditions regarding buffers and other decisions to imbue the property. So I, I think the planning commission saw some opportunities there and saw some things that at this on dust pass, that they're willing to put some buffers on it, some whatever it takes to make sure that the residential properties in the neighborhood won't be too impacted by it. Almost every place in Norco where there's a commercial or retail property, somewhere along the way, that property touches some residential property. All over the town on both sides of Hammer Avenue. Now, having said that, that is a choice location and, and talking about the historic values and what Mrs. Dixon said about the house, I believe Mr. On went through a couple of years working with the city, especially Mrs. Esavigo, and actually went so far as to buy up recent property to relocate that house on. And the, and the planning commission turned him down to relocate that. He was willing to relocate it for the city at no cost. So I don't see Mr. On as being the greed bird that came in here and told somebody that he was gonna build restaurants there, whether you liked it or not, I don't believe that for one second. So he was willing to do that, and the planning commission would not allow him to move that house to that property because it only, it didn't meet the setback requirements from the street. Instead of giving him a variance, letting him move that historic house there, and you still haven't, it was turned down. So it burnt down. I don't know if it was mysteriously burnt down, intensely burnt down, but it burnt down. And some of the other things that I heard here tonight, you know, one, one person said something about they liked the horses, they liked the horse trails, and they don't wanna lose this town. Well, what Mr. Choalwater there said about being bankrupt, folks, we are just about to that one. You know, we just, we just get rid of our fire department and bringing in a Califier to save money, and that contract is at least three point one million dollars. And right now, I don't think we have the three point one million dollars to sign a one-year contract with him, much less a three-year contract. So what are we gonna do after we sign a one-year? This city is broke. I've been talking about two years now, trying to get the city council to put it on me. I don't wanna raise your taxes. I can't raise your taxes. City council cannot do anything like that. But they could put it on the ballot to give you the opportunity, if you wanted to help this town out, about twenty or twenty-five dollars a month each parcel for about three years, and we could get through this economic downturn we've been going through. But if we don't develop something or get something on, I didn't hear anybody screaming about Silver Lakes and all the traffic it's gonna create. There's gonna be four to five thousand cars, four, two, sometime about two thousand cars, maybe four thousand trips a day in and out of there. You won't be able to move at Hamner and Sixth, but everybody likes that property because they're, they really want it. It's not paying anything to the city, we're not getting any development impact fees out of it. We're not getting any property tax off of it because we own the land, we getting some rent off of it. We'll have a nice park down there. But as far as making revenue, unless those people all come here and shop and spend money, we won't get anything off of it. This, we're talking some property here that really is not, is not a good piece of property to build houses on. How many of you would like to live in the house right next to the freeway offering?
I do, so where do you live?
Well, and now maybe you had your say, and I didn't speak up when you were talking, so thank you.
Oh, you asked me a question.
But I asked you a question, okay?
Now let them talk, we didn't interrupt you folks when you were talking. Thank you.
But, you know, and another thing too, and I'm not trying to scare you, but this city has never met their general plan as far as their housing, uh, what goes for low-to-mild income housing. This property is zoned residential. One day, somebody's gonna keep on turning down properties like this, and somebody's gonna bring forth an apartment complex with maybe two or three hundred apartments on it, and the city council say, oh, no, we don't allow apartments. Well, the state says you can't throw them out. So be careful what you don't want for what you might get. Now, there's a couple of other things here. Somebody said that they thought that that's what the charter was put in, was to protect your lifestyle. That is correct. But it also gives the city council, it takes a four to one vote to change any residential to commercial or vice versa. It can still be done, but it gives, it gives us a lot more protection than just changing something just for the hell of it. This is something that needs to be done. It's right on the freeway, it's valuable land for hospitality zone. And especially the one over there, the, the one over there behind the old home base property. The one that Rob talked about for the, where he has a manage, he manages a property. We've had problems with that property ever since I've been on the city council since nineteen ninety-nine. At one time, the city council that was up for sale, the city council, the, we looked into buying it so we could remodel them and turn them into lower mod homes and clean the area up. And Mr. Bullabose, who owned them at a particular time, would not allow us to enter them, to look at them, because they were in such bad shape, we're fearful that we might condemn them. So that has been an eyesore in the neighborhood for many, many times. Now, most of you were talking about the nice new streets you have down there, and you didn't want any more traffic on it. Well, that's one of the things, the city council made a commitment back in two thousand and one, I believe it was, to widen that street and do that. But to do that costs a lot of money. And somewhere, the money's gotta come from somewhere. And all I hear tonight from a lot of you is, we don't want this, we don't want that. But where we gonna get the money? The city needs some money. They need to have, and you talk about, we'll put Picnico Piz over here on Hamner Avenue where they dug out the big hole. Well, if you read the requirements for restaurants and where they need to be, there's, they have to have so many trips a day, so many cars a day by that spot, otherwise they won't even look at your city. And we don't meet that criteria anywhere up and down Hamner Avenue. This is one spot that would meet the criteria with all the cars that are passing along the freeway. So there's a lot more to think about than just giving up some A-120. We've got enough A-120 property in this city to last us all a lifetime, and I'm talking about all of it, our whole lifetime. A big percentage of the houses are empty right now. No one's in them. If all of our houses were filled up, Kat has been speaking here lately about no new houses have been, no new housing at all have been built since you've been on the council. That's true. We don't want any more houses in this city. So yet you wanna keep all A-120 property, especially valuable properties right next to the freeway? I, I don't, I don't understand it. So it's something that needs to be done where the Mr. On owns it, or who owns it. As far as what Mr. McGinnis said and Mr. Cusamano said about the noise and the traffic, the noise can be mitigated by a buffer. The trash, I'm sure that the center would probably be a lot less trash there with a center there than it is now with the way, with nothing there to protect it. Let's see. I think that's about. And, and Mr. Court, you said something about we would sell out our lifestyle. We're not selling out any lifestyle at all, we're trying to protect our lifestyle. If we don't have money, we're not gonna have a lifestyle. We're gonna go back to the county, and you'll have two horses parade. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Kevin.
Okay, before I start on these houses, I just wanna address some of the comments that Councilman Sullivan made. And one of the things that he's talked about being a non-compliance with the general housing element. We did go through the general housing element just last year, and we did select several different properties that showed where we would consider low-income housing. And since we've done that, you know, there's been no callbacks. And now that we have these designated areas, I no longer feel threatened about the, the general housing and our, and being a non-compliance. I also wanted to really brag about this council. We do have a balanced budget. We've made a lot of hard decisions this year, and we do have about one point eight, almost two million dollars in the reserves. Um, that was done with a lot of hard work, we made a lot of cuts here at City Hall. Yes, we did go to Cal Fire to save over one point four million, not to mention long-term, um, savings when we unload the, um, the, the three percent of fifty retirements that we would have to pay in insurance and, and then the good news is that we'll have a third fire station that will be a part of our, um, um, response. And then we also have the opportunity to give every single one of our firefighters an opportunity to work through Cal Fire. So, um, I just wanted to comment that the city is, um, only moving in a positive direction as we know sales tax base is our number one source of revenue and if you notice, the auto mall is looking more full than it's looked in years. Silver Lakes, um, spent time with RJ just over the weekend and, uh, he's really wanting to come to the plate and helping with that bridge widening. Also, um, heard good news from Congressman Calvert who wants to help us with that too. Uh, working in the region is nothing but pure benefit for the city of Norco and we have nothing but a win-win once Silver Lakes come in and, uh, and we'll give, uh, we have just countless, if Roger was here to tell you, of many different, um, businesses and developments and hotels that are just waiting for that to come to fruition and bring business to Norco. Um, so that being said, I want to talk a little bit about the project and, um, I, I will absolutely, um, um, have a lot of torn feelings about this whole, especially the Mr. Ahn's property. I had told him personally over my dead body would I ever, ever, um, vote that property to be commercial, but in, in my, um, efforts of trying to observe the Moreno home and he was very, um, was really wanting to work with me on that. When I stood at the top of that hill, you can't even hear yourself think or talk, which is why I'm sure that property was never developed in A-120 lots back when there was a housing boom here in Norco. Um, so I tried to think, yes, it's true, I was part of the motion that wanted to, uh, to have the hospitality zone and I do know that Second Street is a viable corner. Typically what happens when you try to develop Hammer Avenue, the off-ramps are the most popular and then the, the businesses migrate through the central parts of the city. Um, and so I started working, um, just to really pause around and early at the end of the day, what I'd like to see is a possible joint council planning, uh, commission meeting where we could talk about it. Um, but this little drawing right here is, is kind of what, um, I had thought about as a compromise and I wish that we were going to try to give up on the word for the council to, for the, all of you to see. Um, but, um, my suggestion was just to talk about, not that I necessarily make a motion by any means, but aligning Valley View from Second Street to, um, where the houses start with four, um, 120 lots or larger facing Valley View. I don't know if any of you can tell from this distance, but it would have houses go all along Valley View and then the lot would be deep here, would be coming into Second and then, um, having a huge buffer area, there would be a lot of drainage that would have to go on and then fencing and landscaping and then that would still leave a little over four acres at the top of the hill, um, which then would be, you know, have freeway visibility and, um, um, Steve told me some, you know, told me about businesses that have looked in the town, even a hotel that was ready to go in on two acres. So if you had the, you know, four acres maybe at the top of the hill with residential all along the side of Valley View, um, with this lot especially being very deep, I, I don't have the address line or to know which of you I'm talking to exactly, but that would make all of Valley View residential and, um, and that's the only way that I personally could ever consider it because these people on Valley View purchased A-120 residential lots. And when people purchase property next to commercial, they know that's happening, how could we ever do that to the people who live in this town and not line Valley View with anything other than A-120? To me, that would just be so unfair. They bought with the intent of living in Norco, Horstown, USA. They bought A-120 lots with lots across the street for them being zoned at. So on that particular piece, I just thought maybe we could talk further, possibly a joint planning commission or see what the rest of the council thinks about this suggestion of splitting Mr. Ahn's property and having residential at the bottom of Valley View and still potential with this great off-ramp at the top. Um, so that's how I feel about that, just to discuss that, I think that would be worth, uh, certainly worth the discussion. And then as far as the property across the street, um, again, I feel like dissecting it. The, the really blighted area, um, that Mr. Waz was speaking about, um, is certainly, um, is, you know, not, it's definitely a blighted area and it's not conducive to our Horstown, USA lifestyle. Those homes are living there, they're not animal keeping. Um, we have, Ross and his men are out there continually, they're not conducive, they're bringing the wrong kind of people to Horstown, USA. I don't know how, that property is certainly something we could discuss, but certainly again, not the houses. When you move farther up Valley View, those houses need to stay there, those were A-120 houses and I would never, ever support changing that property to commercial. So I guess, um, I just think that we should talk about a little more about dissecting these properties. I know that it would need a specific plan, even if it would ever come, that the planning commission would need to do that. Um, but I, I could never consider a specific plan that didn't have A-120 lots along Valley View. That's how I'm thinking right now.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy?
Uh, I guess, uh, Steve, did they have a proposal for many restaurants?
No, we don't have...
We have no proposal at all whatsoever. Right. Um, you know, the truth of the matter is, we all know we're in a city of fifteen square miles with thirty thousand residents, five thousand of whom live in the gated community. We make less than two million dollars per year on property taxes. That's something that when you were in council, you lived with, I mean, we all live with that, that's what we live with. Uh, we haven't done a very good job managing that, that's the truth. And so when this all came up, we had to look at, if we're going to preserve the lifestyle, we're going to have to come up with ways to generate income. I mean, we're already dealing with Engels Park, we're dealing with Hammer Avenue, most people, we, we didn't just fill the auto mall, we brought in, uh, one of the top auto dealers, literally in the nation is sitting over there. There's a lot of effort, um, forgive me, we want to hear, start working. I think we have five people up here that have been running full speed for the last two years. In the worst economic downturn since the Great Depression, the city of Norco actually has sales tax numbers going up. We actually have a reserve where we almost didn't have a reserve. Um, and we have branded the town of Norco in such a way that we are a model to other cities throughout the state of California. By the way, the middle of the state, Sacramento is stealing as much money as they possibly can from us. Uh, we have not, we have not lost deputies other than the motorcops, community service officers and some staff. We still have the same amount of patrol officers, uh, on the street that we had two years ago. Our fire department, quite honestly, we're going to save a lot of money and had we done this five, six years ago, we'd have twelve, thirteen, fourteen million dollars in the bank. I mean, win, win, win all the way around. Uh, that said, we would not be doing our due diligence if we didn't look at a major off-ramp. We would not be doing our due diligence. Uh, I was really happy though to hear the residents speak. Um, quite honestly, at this point, I'm looking for the path of least resistance. So I have a whole bunch of property that's sitting between Silver Lakes and Sixth Street. Um, I have, you're right, there's a lot of area that's along, um, Hammer Avenue that needs to be developed. Uh, truthfully, that property's going to develop, but what needs to happen for me is somebody needs to come forward with a project because we don't have anything right now and rather than just zone it willy-nilly so that maybe somebody can slip in, um, I think it might be better just to let somebody bring a project, let's see what it is, see if it's conducive to the neighborhood, see how it pans out and, um, and look at it then. But until then, um, I'm, I'm, I think we just need to sort of let this drop. One thing I want to say, I'm really tired of hearing how we're going bankrupt. I'm really tired of that. Truthfully, the numbers do not support that. Truthfully, everybody's kind of going bankrupt, but the truth of the matter is, Norco, we have a great staff. People don't realize, we, I mean, from two thousand five to two thousand seven, we, we upped our budget, in fact, from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand seven, we upped our budget like four and a half million dollars. We have cut four point one million dollars out of our budget. We went from a hundred and six employees in two thousand seven to fifty when we made this change over to Cal, to Cal, um, Cal, Cal Fire. We have department heads that are doing two jobs. We no longer have an engineering department, we, we've amalgamated all these different departments. We have cut to the friggin' bone. I mean, and yet that's a staff, we have staff members that literally on nights at council rent a motel room because they don't want to take the chance of going to drive home, they're working so hard to get ready for this meeting. The, the residents of Norco need to understand, there are incredible efforts going on to save and to develop this city. I don't have an axe for you, Mr. Ahn, not at all. I mean, truthfully, I, I think you did try to move the house, I think you did make some efforts. If you got a project, bring it and then let's talk to the residents, see if it works for them and let's see what we can do there. Um, but until then, I think I'm just going to kind of let this thing sit and focus other places. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Karen Gray.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, a couple of questions, Steve. On the traffic impact analysis that was done, was there signalization? If, if this zone was to change, is there a signal proposed for that intersection?
Yes, in Valley View and Second, there would have been a signal.
And, and the costs would be absorbed by whom?
Whoever is developing the project.
There would, there would be no city contribution?
Generally, the developer, if they're creating the full impact that creates demand for that signal, they would pay for it. If there is some city growth involved in that, um, then the city would probably kick in some money to help towards that. But without the project, and I shouldn't speak for Bill, but I'm, I'm...
You do, fine.
Without that, I, I don't think that that intersection would ever get to the warrants that would require a signal. So it probably would mostly fall on the developer.
Okay. My next question is, um, and I imagine this is city council policy, but where do we draw the line that what would, if, if these zone changes went through, what would keep the property owners at the northeast corner and southeast corner to change their zoning and develop those properties in a, in a commercial or commercial hospitality zone? What would save her to replace?
Well, the, the owners could certainly come and request, and they're welcome, they're as free as anybody to come and request an application or request its own change of the property. Ultimately, it comes down to policies of the city council and where they want that to stop. The, and to keep going further, there, there is kind of a diminishing reward simply because of what has already been discussed about the fact that there's just not a lot of rooftops to create demand for commercial property that isn't taking advantage of the freeway traffic. So if you can't see it from the freeway, uh, you're probably not going to get much more creepy eastward just because it, it wouldn't be able to, the population couldn't support the commercial zone. But, that being said, could the north, northeast and southeast corners come in eventually? It could. Uh, they would have to go to planning commission for a recommendation and then ultimately to the city council, it's, 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 the city council would, would, uh, make that determination. Uh, but, just so everybody knows, it, it has to be consistent with the general plan so we'd have to be corresponding, as we're looking at tonight, corresponding general plan amendments because right now those are designated as agricultural residential and the general plan.
I'm going to jump from Valley View for a minute, let's jump over to Hidden Valley, uh, where the mini storage is now being considered to be CH. What permitted uses could that owner add to his property today?
Well, it would be all of the uses that are currently allowed in the commercial district of the given specific plan. And it's, I don't have it in front of me, but it's a, it's, it's a fairly typical broad ranging commercial zone that allows everything from fast food to gas stations to department stores. So if you had to, well, you would have, you could potentially put a lot of things in.
And, and was this discussed at planning that, um, there was no plan brought forward for, uh, any additional development on the Hidden Valley Zone? And if the zone change was made to commercial hospitality today and he decided to bring in, let's say, a gas station or a restaurant, is he, you know, maybe the restaurant, but, um, now he becomes a non-conformant use?
Correct.
And, and was there discussion on that? Is that limited yet?
No, there wasn't a lot of discussion on that side. Uh, most of the discussion and planning commission focused on the two northwest, southwest corners of Hammer and here and Second. The, the question was asked of why that site was included, uh, but there wasn't a lot of discussion on that one.
But, but once again, there is no plan that was brought forward for the Hidden Valley project. But would you agree he could be placed into a situation, if he brought forward a project, that he would now be dealing with a non-conformant use? I, overall fundamentally, um, I don't want to change any A-120 zone. And I look back that we went through the largest housing boom in history that we're ever going to see and nobody developed any homes on that property. The possibility does exist that the highest and best use for that corner, that's second in Valley View, could be commercial or commercial hospitality. My concerns are these. One, uh, no project has been brought forward, uh, no neighborhood meetings have been held and I understand that the essence of that zone, that CH zone, was to identify properties that could support and be complementary to Silver Lakes and Engels Park. And then we would, if, if that zone change was made, bring forward a specific plan. And what concerns me with that is, once we open that door ever so slightly and say, bring us a plan, then we bring in the attorneys. And, and I don't even want to get to that point. And I, I think the approach right now is that there's no plan, there, there's no proposal for development and, and I couldn't support this at this time.
Thank you. I moved out here in nineteen eighty-six before they put the freeway and I thought that was a lovely location for a horse ranch at the time and I think that's what the Moreno family had, had done with it, done with it. But then, uh, the freeway came through and I sat there and looked and I thought, what a horrible place to raise animals, right up above the freeway with the noise and the fumes and everything and I, and what a, what a bad place to put homes and live. I don't, I can't imagine anybody wanting to live up above the, the noise. I mean, I live a half a mile from the freeway and it's somewhere, it's pretty loud over there in my area and I know what you guys have, where you're at now. But, uh, then I got to thinking that that would be a great place for a hotel and a restaurant. Not eight or nine different businesses on the place, maybe a couple, but you'd have to put some kind of a buffer zone between it and the people on Valley View over there. And after talking to the gentleman that has his window eight foot from the property, he'd probably suffocate over if he didn't get that breached. So that don't leave, leave a lot there. There's a lot to think about what would go there and I kind of have to agree with Kathy that maybe we should look at putting A-120 or homes and little half-acre ranches back down our own Valley View along that one little area there and then try to figure out later on what could go on the freeway side of it. But, uh, traffic, I know you guys are buried in traffic over there and I do my own little traffic study, I don't look at a piece of paper. I go get in a vehicle and travel the area and I don't know how long it takes to get up one street, down the... down the other one, across, back and forth at two different times of the day. And unless that, if you did put businesses in over there, you would need a signal right close to the freeway off ramp on Second to help move that traffic in and out. Instead of running it all on Second around the corner on Valley View, that, that wouldn't work. So right at the moment, I don't see that I can support changing the zone. We need to do some more looking at the, and studying of the area over there and, and see what happens in the next year or so with traffic. So, thank you. How about, okay.
Another question. For Steve, in the, in the findings, I'm finding A, that this zone change is, is consistent with our general plan use. Knowing that we maintain A-120, I think that's the problem I'm having in, in with the findings, is that at, at this time, I don't see how the, the consistency works with our general plan. Do you have any comment on that? Or how, how, how did you make that finding?
Oh, in order to, to do the zone change, we talked about earlier, you have to do the general plan amendment, the corresponding. And in, in that action, it then becomes consistent with the general plan, which you have to do, otherwise you can never do a zone change.
So it just becomes consistent only because you do the general plan change?
It, it's consistent because what the zoning being proposed is consistent with the commercial designation in the general plan matches.
And Mayor, the last thing, and I was just gonna bring this up under other matters, but for any members of the audience, I was gonna talk a little bit about our hospitalities project that Roger put together. And some of you may want to state that.
Wait till other matters, sir.
Yeah, I will. Thanks.
Can I make a motion to deny this?
Well, I thought, did you have your hand up, Harvey?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Harvey and Kathy, Harvey and Kathy both did.
Okay, the only, you know, I agree that it absolutely needs a specific plan. But I guess just in lieu of being, I also know that sometimes Norco's criticized for not being really easy to work with when developers come to our counter. And to deny the project, I certainly have no problem with it because, as you know, the project includes having the, um, the commercial zone go all the way onto Valley View. But I just think that with it being a charter issue and it being a four-to-one vote, I don't know if there's some way in the motion we could consider including, unless I'm the only one that feels that they only want A-120 on Valley View, that it's just kind of unfair to leave a developer to spend the money and the engineering of a plan when I know there's no way in heck that I will ever vote to have commercial land on Valley View. So I, I don't know if we should leave it that open because we're trying to, with the hospitality zone, I think one of the things that we need to do is, is, I really think that, makes me think of Paul Pembore. I speak with him on occasion. He thinks that we should have a whole general plan of the entire city so when developers come to the town, they really get and understand our vision because it's frustrating to come to Norco, Horst Town USA, and, and spend the money on plans and projects just to have us deny them. So I guess we have made it a little bit clear that we want hospitality. We made that very clear in this new designation. But I guess, at least Mr. On's in the audience, and I guess if we don't do anything but just deny the project, know that at least this council person thinks that we need to split the lot and, and have it A-120 along there. And I do have to say that I'm along the same thinking with Greg is the general plan certainly found the circulation element. The whole general plan shows A-120 lots throughout the arterial streets of Norco. So to put commercial on Valley View, to me, is, that's kind of what you're saying, right, Greg? Is that's just, doesn't seem in compliance with the general plan.
I was just gonna say, just to clarify that, this action, if you change the zoning, you're also amending the general plan. That's what the findings are.
All the one.
So right now, there's, it doesn't, it's, if you approve this, the zoning here, you're also approving a number of the general plan.
Well, that's a nightmare, the thing that we start doing that. So, okay, that's all my comments for now.
Harvey?
Yeah, I think one thing we might, Kathy was talking about here. If we haven't heard from the applicant yet, I think we should give him a chance to speak.
In this, in this case, there isn't a applicant. This is a city-initiated zone change.
Well, the owner of the property. Well, I'll go ahead and say a few things. Probably sometimes don't know when to keep my mouth shut, but I, you know, I say what I believe in, and what I feel, and what I think this city needs. And, you know, we talked about some things here tonight, and I really don't know which way to take it. Mr. Bash was talking about what an incredible job, and he's really patting our staff on the, on the back for doing such an incredible job of, of balancing the budget and keeping things intact and keeping this city afloat. I, I mean, I can't take it as a drag when we've cut from a hundred and six employees down to fifty. I mean, that's told me that something is wrong in your city. And what I've said many, many times, standing up here behind this podium, that this city council has done nothing to bring in revenue or done not a damn thing to help this city as far as bringing in tax base, it all just happened. You know, they didn't go out, get anything, bring anything in. And certainly, and I've been, said I've been ashamed to be a part of this because I was a part of it, but there's several things that came forward that got turned down. Just like this one tonight, and it seemed like this city council has helped in on doing the same thing. We talk about, we're not going broke. You know, our finance director's been telling us for seven, five years now, several years now, that it was coming down and we're going to, and I believe, maybe I need to ask the city manager if I'm not correct, we used the last six hundred thousand dollars in the reserve fund to balance the budget this year. Now, we do have an endowment fund. We put aside some money that we did not want to use or anything. We didn't call it a reserve fund, but we do have about a million and a half, two million aside somewhere else, right? But that's not gonna last forever. Am I correct? Did we use the last six hundred thousand?
A couple of things. The, the six hundred thousand, we could use the six hundred thousand on the last of the undesigned impacted fees, yes, to balance the budget. But the money that's in the special asset fund, it's not an endowment. It's, it's, it's a fund within the general fund, and it just has special parameters set up before it could be spent.
It wasn't, it wasn't part of the eight point two million dollars that we had in reserves at the end of two thousand and seven, right?
No, it, it is separate. But again, it's, it's whatever you, it's kind of, it's money that is there and available. It just is in a separate fund.
Yeah. Okay, and I want to take my hats off to the staff, too. They have done one whole incredible job keeping this city afloat. And it wouldn't surprise me if they don't go home tonight and pull their damn hair out because we're not trying to help them at all. And I, I, I just don't understand. And we talk about, and I won't get this off my chest while I'm at it. We talk about, we're gonna save one point four million dollars in the fire department. We'd have done this many, many years ago. We got fifteen million dollar bank for bull crap. You know, we, and we talk about, we got rid of the fire department. We got rid of the three at fifty. We didn't get rid of the three at fifty. We had an opportunity to get rid of the three at fifty by negotiating with our fire department and getting it three at fifty-five. We didn't take that opportunity, so now we got rid of them. So they're gonna sue us. They're gonna get their three at fifty. But that would have saved us about one point eight million dollars. When you add that on to the cost of the, of the Cal Fire contract each year, Cal Fire's gonna cost us a lot more for the next few years than what our fire department was costing. So there's a whole lot of unknowns here. And I think this city council is just not willing to stand up to the plate, open Crown Avenue, zone some of these places that are need to be zoned property. And you talk about, you don't wanna, you don't wanna zone something until a project's brought forward. How many developers are gonna come and bring a project to Norco with the kind of treatment that they get here in Norco? Who the hell would want to spend their money putting plans together to try to bring a project forward for this project? When it, you know, in order to have good projects come to your city, you need to have, we talked about one time, down First Street, right across from Target, buying all of those houses there, Acre Street, cleaning that all off so that we would have land for somebody to come here build. We didn't do it. So when you talk about, you need a project to come forward first, it's just a, it's just a poor excuse for not supporting it. Thank you.
Now, now, I hear a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just, just a minute for a second. I think it's reasonable as a city council person that, and Greg made a very good point. We build a park, we get everybody together in the neighborhood. We have an actual project. Here, we don't have a project. We haven't talked to the neighbors. I think as council people, we need to be responsive to the residents, the developer. Mr. On hasn't brought anything forward. You know, and Harvey, damn it, two thousand and seven, you had six million dollars in sales tax revenues. You had three million dollars in development fees. You bumped the budget up to almost seventeen million dollars, and you're so proud of the fact you had eight point four million dollars in the bank. You know, I, I, I don't even know what to say to those things. I don't know what to say to those things. Now, we, we are fighting as hard as we possibly can. We have brought businesses into this town. Maybe you haven't been there, but I mean, just to, I mean, just the whole state of others' thing. We're doing everything we can to foster business in the city of Norco. I mean, we, we have so many things going on. And I don't, I don't know why you don't see it. But the truth of the matter is, the Cal Fire is a gift to the citizens of Norco, in my opinion. One point four million dollars is a lot of money. You were told, quite frankly, as a council person a decade ago, that had you started cutting costs, we wouldn't be in this shape. So I, I mean, I'm just so tired of you going on these tirades. I've just absolutely had it.
Let's get back to the second. We need a, a motion.
I made a motion to deny.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second, but I don't know exactly, John. I'd like to deny the project at this time, but I really would love to have a joint council planning commission meeting and talk about, instead of just denying this, an opportunity for us to really roundtable and think about the economic benefits and still maintain A-120 along Hager Avenue. There's just not enough discussion to talk about, for me, the impact of the light.
Is there a question in there someplace?
Yes, I'd like to, deny it now with the...
Yeah, what's on the agenda is just...
To second his motion, but add that we have a meeting to discuss it further with the planning commission. Can I do that?
No, it's not, it's nice.
Bring that back under another...
Other matters.
Yeah, just bring this up.
Okay, and I'll just second this. Okay, I'll second.
Can we do two separate motions, please? If, if you look at the recommendation, we have two motions. And the first thing we need to deny is the negative death. And then the second, yeah, if we can do that. Okay.
Okay, Kathy, you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have...
Yeah, under discussion. Yeah, you know, Kevin, we could talk all night about this, but you know, you've been preaching economic development, economic development. You've been breathing in and eating, living and sleeping it since you've been on the council. Really surprised the night that you went the way you did, that that's your choice, you know? And you know what? I know we've had a part of, we've all voted on these things, but we didn't go out and bring in any of these projects. They just came to us, you know, so. And you, you guys were really happier, at least you were really proud to tell everybody about how much money we're saving on the fire department because we were down so much on the sales tax. We had to cut, 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 yes.
Let's go back here to the original thing, please. I know you're, you're getting off on the subject on the fire department. This is a...
I'm not talking about the fire department.
I'm trying to have a second right here on this issue, the negative declaration.
I'm talking about the, uh...
I called you on the question, Mr. Mayor. What is the question?
That's, uh, what'd you say?
What'd you say? What'd you say? I didn't hear the call for the question.
Okay, you called for the question. Okay, so we got a motion, a second on the first adopted negative declarations. So vote on the board. That passes four one.
And then I make a motion for the second part of that, which, can you get me the wording on that, Brenda? What you need to see, what you need to hear in that motion, second part?
Would you read the first motion again?
The first motion was just to deny the negative declaration.
Just to deny the, the, the zone change.
This is to not, to deny, I make a motion to deny the zone change.
And I'll second. So we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Vote on the board. And that passes four one. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming tonight. Okay, item six is for the comments. This is the time where you can get up and talk about anything that's not on the agenda. And you have three minutes. And the first card I have is Vernon Shaw. Did you run out? Oh, John got mine. Okay, nice. I thought you didn't like it. Vernon, go ahead. The clock hadn't started yet.
Okay, not a problem. As you know, this is election time. And as you know, I'm a signed Nazi. So I'll get right to the point. All political signs that are gonna be in the right of way, and there are some in the right of way today, I will call, or the code enforcement people will call, and I have to be part of that. They will call that candidate and tell them where the sign is in the right of way. It needs to be removed. If it's not removed, then we will remove it. I just want everybody to know that upfront so that there's, there's no problem with the fact because there are some in the right of way today. I've seen them today. That, I don't want to say that, you know, that, we're trying to be the bad guys or nothing, but we have rules in the city, and you all know about the rules. Those are really rules that are put there to keep the literate stuff down. So I tell you all you right now, and I hope the rest of the people that are running, besides the ones that are sitting up here now, are here so they get the information also. If they're in the right of way, we'll notify you. If they're not picked up or moved, it will be removed by us. Thank you.
That's the shortest speech you ever made. Thank you. Next, John Feringsh.
Fariga.
Fariga.
Okay, you should have a copy of a contract from the Norco redevelopment agency that my mom signed with the city. She signed this in November two thousand and seven, and the contract requires specific things that the city require of the contractors involved. Now, Mr. Newton, you've mentioned that the council, the city's responsive to the citizens. They are. This contractor on this contract was paid a total of fifteen thousand dollars prior to even having final permits, which were required in this contract. I really think that the person responsible, there's a breaking fiduciary responsibility in managing money that they're in charge of for the city. Aside from this, I know the prior contractor that was involved with my mom, I believe he's gotten the city involved in litigation with a Mr. White. And the same issues went on with that. As it stands right now, we just finished arbitration with the contractor. Almost four years later. The spots highlighted notate where the city failed. It also notates when the work started. He was paid March twentieth. There's a copy of the permit. The permit here, he applied for the air conditioner on November fourth, two thousand and eight, almost a year after the contract was signed, eight months after he was paid. I also have in my hands letters, which are also how responsive the city employees are to the citizens. And this here is signed by two city officials with facts that are inaccurate, non-supportive of documents, which would be in a file, and were faxed from a city employee's home at four forty-one P.M. in the afternoon. And it's right, it's here. The dates, everything in this does not correspond. There needs to be some investigation of the department who manages this, the money, how it's handled, and the checks. it's handled, and the checks and balances. I am quite confident, if the city goes through these files, they will find contractors have been paid hundreds of thousands of dollars, and either did not get permits, did not complete the work, and given the amount of money transacting with these contractors, it wouldn't surprise me with these breaches of responsibility that somebody is receiving money from the contractors. Now, there's a frown over there, but it seems hard to swallow that an employee can issue a check, I mean, a contractor, when they didn't get a permit, didn't get it final. This permit here, there's actually work that the contractor performed, and it was never inspected or signed off by the city. That's a separate issue at this point. But this is just to bring to your, the council's attention, to do something to help the citizens and protect the money the city has.
Thank you. Next card is John Court.
I would just like to rebuttal to some of the comments that I heard from the council, especially things, I've been a public employee for twenty-seven years, everywhere, almost every staff was cut in half. It has nothing to do with management, it has to do with funding and lack of foresight, and nobody knew what was gonna happen to this kind of economy. I think selling, making the wrong choices in an area that kept my property value up versus others, because New York, Norco is a unique entity that people want to live in, is more important than an attitude or an oversight. I think there's grants that can be looked for, there's a lot of abilities, that Norco overlooks things that are happening with clean water rats and stuff, that there's monies out to clean up, that will take care of the roads and things that people are pushing, say there's a problem. If you wanna get a grant, you gotta put a curb and gutter, you have to do things that aren't there right now. And I believe if you keep having a negative attitude blaming lack of planning on the economy, then we're gonna be suffering forever. I think we should open the doors, if a developer wants to come in, come in with a proposal, don't come in in blind sight, and when you notify the residents of something going on, broaden your spectrum, let everybody in the general area that has to know, and I mean, the first notice that we got out, I think maybe twenty-five, fifty people were notified, we went out and served our neighbors the notices that we got, because they never saw it, they lived across the street from us, down the street. Everybody's offended by this. You should broaden the spectrum, the city GIS does plenty of programs, you push a button, you notify more people, you spend a little bit more on postage, but you'll get a lot more of how people really feel, where they live, and how it will affect them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, other matters, council, Greg, we'll start with you.
Thanks, Mayor. I was gonna ask Beth, I didn't know if this, if you had this on your list, on Roger's, our economic development consultant, Roger Grody, put together this next generation of hospitality in Horstown, USA. I think it would be a benefit if any and all of you can look at this and see how they're trying to promote commercial hospitality to developers, and there's some really good ideas in here as far as low-impact, western-style businesses that are tremendous in tax revenues. And I was just gonna ask Beth, when it got to council, if you would expound on that a little bit. And the other little item I had was, just to remind everybody on Tuesday's open riding on Ingalls Park from ten to three, Glenn Hedges and I were up there the other day, and we shared the arena with one other person, so it's open, show up. That's all I have, thanks.
Go ahead, Beth, and get that part.
Yes, the, the materials that Councilman Newton is referring to are part of, are part of a economic development outreach specifically to brokers and folks that do hospitality and destination-type uses, and specifically that one has to do more with guest ranches, with a, with a guest ranch type of use. And so, these are folks that we've been outreaching to, that have actually showed some interest in coming in here and maybe investing in some of our properties. It is part of a larger package that we're redoing for the city website, right now, we're using it when we meet with individuals, but we will have all of that packaged, because there's a lot of that whole economic development section on the website we're redoing. But again, we're doing it, we do all that in-house, so you'll, you'll get there.
And I just wanted to compliment you and staff, and Roger works real hard on all of this, and, yeah, I mean, this takes it from bed and breakfast to major-type resorts and everything in between, so it's just, you guys are working real hard, and I appreciate all you do, Beth.
Thank you, Kevin.
I just have one thing, we have a really wonderful junior ROTC program here at Norco High School, and one of the things I'm in the process of creating with some other people is the George Allen Ingalls Memorial Scholarship, and so I'm looking for people that may want to assist in what it would be, it would be a scholarship that was given to a senior who was graduating from the ROTC program, it would be through the school, and I'm trying to create an endowment of ten thousand dollars, I already have a commitment of about six thousand dollars, and so my goal is either thousand or two thousand dollar scholarships each year, we'll see, but the goal is, is, is ten thousand, and then donate a plaque, and we're actually creating a plaque that'll be put on the wall. I don't know if people know this, know this, but George A. Ingalls was a Medal of Honor winner, posthumously received it, was a Norco boy, and they recently named their headquarters here at Norco High in his honor. So, if anybody's interested, contact me, I'm gonna be putting it out there, and that's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy?
I guess in the heated discussion, my dear friend, Pat Overstreet, didn't pull the card to talk about the rural meeting, and it's tomorrow night, correct? And I know there's been a lot of discussion about Silver Lakes tonight, and it seems like it's just like this long, never-ending discussion where we don't see much happening, but the owner is, is the keynote speaker tomorrow night at rural, he's gonna be making a lot of amazing announcements tomorrow night, and I really encourage you to come and bring ten friends, because it's gonna make you, after tomorrow night's rural meeting, you're gonna really understand the direction that the city is going, and the true benefits of Silver Lakes, and the opportunities that it's gonna bring to this town. So, see Pat for more information where it is, we can, I think it's seven o'clock, and it's at Food Connection.
RJ Brandis himself.
RJ Brandis himself will be there. And then, again, I wanted, being as I was told at this time, I just wanted to talk a little more about this joint meeting that I'd like to propose under other matters. I think that these three properties were hard to bring together tonight, so it's just the best thing at this point to deny them, but I think like someone mentioned, there was no discussion in the minutes from the planning on how they felt about the Hidden Valley property, so I didn't even really know how they felt about that. That property, we didn't really even hardly talk about it tonight, and we do need to think about being fiscally accountable and having opportunities to raise our sales tax back, sales tax base in this town, and I do think that we need to try to be a little more developer-friendly, and before they spend, I don't know how much money it would take for a specific plan, to bring to us without a little more guidance. So, I think that if we could get together and really help me to understand the planning about the significant of the lights, the gray product, didn't even get to think about, really, you know, there's nothing in here about, you know, streetlights, and really how this is gonna impact, and really, what is the benefit offsetting the residents, and I just have to say that the residents is who we represent. We are voted in by the residents, and we need to listen to the residents, and I really say that about giving them an opportunity, that we didn't have the meeting yet, and yet, this is just too gray of an area, so I really hope that, if this is the right time, can I make a motion that we hold a joint planning? I know it takes a lot of money to hold double meetings, but I think that it's something that's really needed at this time. We haven't done one in years. Can I make a motion?
I just wanna follow, I mean, when we had, and again, I know that, when we have a meeting in March of two thousand and ten, at that point in time, where you talked about, we need to get through the immediate budget, and then the council at that time, again, we have some different players, had we looked to let us get through that budget year, let us get through those budgets, and then you had asked us to come back and do, to structure some type of strategic planning, and so if it's the, the will of the folks, we could structure that as kind of a joint, in a joint setting.
I know.
If that would work. Now, again, those are things we're doing after the new year, so I just want, I need to get a little, you know, expectation management here, so it's not something, to do that, we really need to get, you know, we need to have the planning and be able to plan ahead and spend a good bum of time.
Right, and we could talk about each of these projects more individually, and talk about, you know, the benefits and the, and the negative impact to the residents and the rural way.
I guess I just wanna clarify, because we, I was saying we could do that in the context of a strategic plan, there's several issues in the city that would be involved in strategic plan session, and we could do that as a joint, but they all would impact, you know, planning issues, so is this something you wanna do, specifically joint meeting just on the zoning?
Well, I could spend a couple hours on this, but I think we could start with the strategic plan like we talked about doing, and then if we need to schedule another meeting, if we need more time in on this, then that would be great.
I'll put together a couple of options, maybe how we could do that?
Yeah, I have a big picture, I gave, sorry.
Okay, that sounds great, and I guess that's all I have.
Harvey? I've only got a couple things, today, let's see, myself and Beth and Greg was there and Kevin, we went across the river to the, we've been cutting up the new fire station in East Bay, was quite a deal, it was a year ago, it was over, when they broke ground, and today they had the official opening with their three trucks, and everybody, or it's gonna be quite a deal, plus their Cal Fire, so they'll be able to assist our city if we have anything major. And the only other thing I've got is next Thursday, which I believe it's Thursday on September the thirtieth, is that right, Kevin? State of Brothers? Friday, Friday morning at nine A.M., State of Brothers, over in the parking lots, gonna have their fortieth birthday celebration, so some of us are gonna go over there, nine A.M. Okay, staff, have any other matters? Okay.
Just real quickly, I wanted to kind of explain, we have these bags up here in front of all the council, and it's kinda showed up in front of you, just wanted to say that we get a lot of requests in at City Hall, where folks want something, something low-cost that has the Horstown USA logo that is useful, so that was the task that we had put forward, and so we were able to find a, a piece, these are the, you know, the multipurpose bags, you can use them in all the grocery stores, and everybody's trying to tell you to use them, or just general bags, and so we, we did do an order of them to see if they're, if it's something folks like, and we're selling them just above cost at two dollars. So, we do have these now in City Hall, if you come on in, Diane can, can work that out for you, but, so again, it's just a nice, simple, useful way to promote the Horstown USA logo, so we do have those now.
Hey, anybody, staff, Bill, anybody, not see anything, I was wondering.
I probably should just let council know, and I know you're all aware of it, on the, on September third, Saturday, we had a little glitch in our water system in a, in a select area of town, where we introduced some nitrates. As obligated and responsible as we are supposed to be, we notified those people, and the water is back to normal, and was back to normal action on the fourth, it only was a short period of time, a few hours, the health department is okay, we tested everything, and you can drink the water still in Norco.
Thank you, well, that's the meeting adjourned, thank you.